Buenas tardes, todos. Hemos tomado café para darle el saludo a la celebración del cumpleaños de la Virgen de Misión. Esta es nuestra gran nación y tenemos una gran ciudad. Tenemos muchas cosas pasando. Tenemos pintura de cara, hay mucho comida, hay carriles de perritos para los pequeños. Ya he visto muchos sonrisas en los pequeños, lo que hace que todo valga la pena.
resultó ser un descanso hermoso. Todo lo que puedo hacer para salirla y ella acabó de tomar algunos carriles y nos pedimos algo de comida. Así que estamos tan felices de estar aquí, estamos muy emocionados. Amo cómo la ciudad de Misión nunca olvida a sus personas. Todavía vamos a visitar todos los pequeños tiendas. Amo comprar en tiendas locales. Amo apoyar.
Esto es un evento gratuito. Tenemos muchos juegos y actividades divertidas. Por supuesto, entretenimiento, un zoo de perros, muchos vendedores de comida. Y estamos extremadamente felices de ver a la comunidad aquí afuera y de acompañarse en este descanso hermoso aquí en la ciudad de Misión. Es extremadamente importante tener eventos como este porque queremos tener actividades para la comunidad, pero también, lo más importante, que sean gratuitos.
Buenas tardes a todos. Qué descanso hermoso. Muchas gracias por acompañarnos en un evento Garden of Light. Soy Kenia Gómez, Director de Relaciones Media, y es un honor estar aquí. Sé que esto es...
Conoces al presidente.
la señora Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Presidente.
la señora Councillora Jessica Ortega.
Presente.
la señora Abiel Flores.
Presente.
la señora Alberto Vela.
Presente.
la señora estableció el foro.
Gracias mucho. El siguiente item es la invocación y el juramento de allegiance.
Si puedo, todos, por favor, sean en pie. Padre Dios, oramos que llenes nuestros corazones con compasión para aquellos que han sufrido abusos y violencia. Guíenos en vigilancia para que podamos reconocer a aquellos que necesitan nuestra ayuda. Directamos nuestros corazones para que podamos deshacerse de las cargas que les están puesta y los traiga a la libertad y la seguridad. En nombre de Jesús oramos. Amén.
¿Dónde está nuestra bandera? Nos han engañado.
Estoy feliz de haber prestado atención.
Sí, estamos prestando atención.
Lo disculpa.
juramento de allegiance. Para la bandera de Estados Unidos de América. Para la República por la cual se exige. Una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con dignidad y justicia para todos.
Pueden sentarse.
Bueno, eso es un primer.
¿Qué fue el primer?
Fue el primer, eso es correcto. Bien, el siguiente item, la revelación de conflictos de interés. ¿Se presentó algo?
No, ma'am, no hubo.
Bien, el siguiente item son nuestras presentaciones. Y el primero es nuestro Downturn Month de la señora Cavill.
Señora, counciliencia, tenemos algunos invitados muy especiales hoy que querrían estar aquí conmigo mientras leo la proclamación. Queremos llamarlas Mary Lopez y Viva. Y Viva estará diciendo algunas palabras para nosotros después de leer la proclamación. La proclamación lee así: Mientras que en promedio, alrededor de 550 bebés nacen con Down Syndrome en Texas cada año y alrededor de 6,000 en todo el país. Mientras que hay más de 1,250 individuos con Down Syndrome viviendo en Hidalgo County y 250,000 individuos viviendo con Down Syndrome en los Estados Unidos. Mientras que el Downturn Syndrome es la condición más común que resulta en que individuos sean nacidos con una copia extra de Chromosome 21. Mientras que las investigaciones e intervenciones tempranas han resultado en una mejora dramática y el lifespan y el potencial de aquellos afectados, más esfuerzos son necesarios para romper las barreras y promover la defensa y acceso a recursos para individuos con Down Syndrome. Mientras que las organizaciones locales como la Asociación Down Syndrome de la Río Grande Valley, Easter Seals RGV, Capable Kids Foundation y Special Olympics aumentan la conciencia y la educación y proporcionan servicios y apoyo para individuos con Down Syndrome y sus familias en todo el río Grande Valley. Mientras que posee un amplio alcance de habilidades, las personas con Down Syndrome son participantes activos en círculos educativos, ocupacionales, sociales y recreativos dentro de nuestras comunidades. Mientras que los individuos con Down Syndrome deberían tener la oportunidad igual de perseguir sus sueños, tomar orgullo de sus logros, estar incluidos en su comunidad y alcanzar su mayor potencial. Entonces, nosotros, el counciliencia de la ciudad de Misión, proclamamos octubre de 2023 como Downturn Awareness Month en la ciudad de Misión. Proclamado el 25º día de septiembre de 2023.
¿Habrá un motion? Hablemos de un motion. Aprobemos. Hay un motion y un segundo para aprobar la proclamación como leído. Todos en favor decir aye.
Aye.
Todos en contra decir no. Motion lleva unanimidad.
Y creo que Viva quería que me agarrara. Estaba ansiosa.
Sí, sí. Pon el micrófono para ella. Lleva el micrófono.
Hola, Viva. Hola, Viva. Estoy feliz.
Estamos felices por ti.
¿Mi rostro aquí? ¿Mi rostro aquí?
Te agradezco, querida. Gracias por estar aquí. Te amamos.
Muchas gracias.
Bueno.
De acuerdo.
Puedo seguir con sus palabras. Puedo seguir con sus palabras y divertirme. Y decir... Puedo decir... Vamos a empezar.
¿Alguien más? ¿Alguien más quiere decir algunas palabras? ¿Una más? ¿Quieres decir algunas palabras? ¿Está aquí? Vamos.
Hola, mi nombre es Marky. Soy mi amiga Viva. Estoy conmigo en el sexto lugar. Mi presente para siempre.
Deborah, sí, la señora Deborah.
Gracias. Hola, mi nombre es Deborah Tomay y soy la presidenta de la Asociación Down Syndrome de la Río Grande Valley. Y solo queremos decirles gracias a la ciudad de Misión por la forma en que reconocen, incluyen y aceptan a las personas con discapacidad, particularmente el Downturn Syndrome, desde que octubre es Downturn Awareness Month. Ha sido emocionante a través de los años ver a los estudiantes incluidos en las escuelas, tener oportunidades de alentar, participar en actividades y, con suerte, ser empleada por la ciudad de Misión y los negocios aquí. Estamos emocionadas por celebrar Downturn Awareness Month y todas las diferentes personas con Down Syndrome y sus muchos dones y habilidades y el valor que traen a nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias.
Vamos, señora Jackie. Hola, Jackie.
Gracias.
Señor, quiero darle la oportunidad de agradecer a mis hermanos y hermanas por hacer un gran trabajo para animar a este señor y a mi hija, que es un RN aquí en el hospital. Y por hacer un gran trabajo como madre soltera. Y ella fue a una escuela de medicina de procuro y con su esfuerzo ha hecho un gran trabajo animando a la gente.
¡Hola! Está funcionando bien. Es muy linda. Bien, la próxima proclamación es el Día de Prevención de Fire.
Buenas tardes, señora y counciliencia. Conmigo hoy tenemos nuestro Bureau de Prevención de Fire y uno de nuestros jefes también. Y como todos saben, octubre es Día de Prevención de Fire, pero nos gusta decir un mes porque es un mes para ir todo. Así que aquí vamos. Mientras que la ciudad de Misión está comprometida con asegurar la seguridad y seguridad de todos los que viven y visitan la ciudad de Misión. Y mientras que el fuego es un grave problema de seguridad pública, tanto localmente como nacionalmente, y los hogares son los lugares donde la gente está en mayor riesgo de fuego. Y mientras que las alarmas de humo detectan el humo bien antes que puedas, advirtiendo a ti de peligro en el caso de un fuego en el que puede tener solo segundos para escapar seguramente. Y mientras que las alarmas de humo trabajadoras salvan vidas al proporcionar un aviso temprano de un fuego para que tú y tu familia puedan escapar seguramente. Y mientras que las residentes de la ciudad de Misión deben estar seguras de que todos en el hogar entienden los sonidos de las alarmas y saben cómo responder. Y mientras que los residentes que han planeado y practicado un plan de escape de fuego en casa están más preparados y, por lo tanto, son más susceptibles de sobrevivir a un fuego. Y mientras que los primeros respondientes de la ciudad de Misión están dedicados a reducir la ocurrencia de incendios en casa y les da daño a casa a través de la prevención y la educación de seguridad de los incendios públicos. Y mientras que el tema de Día de Prevención de Fire de 2023, Cocin Safety, comienza con ustedes. Presten atención a la prevención de incendios. Efectivamente sirve para recordaros que es importante desarrollar un plan de escape en casa con todos los miembros de la familia y practicarlo regularmente. Entonces, nosotros, el counciliencia de la ciudad de Misión, proclamamos el 8 al 14 de octubre de 2023 como Día de Prevención de Fire. Y invitamos a todos los ciudadanos a nuestra Casa Abierta para que se celebre en el patio Leo Bena Placita en la 803 N. Conway el 2 de octubre de 2023 de 6:00 p.m. a 9:00 p.m. Y urge a todos los ciudadanos de la ciudad de Misión que Cocin Safety comienza con ustedes. Presten atención a la prevención de incendios y a apoyar las muchas actividades de seguridad pública y esfuerzos de los servicios de fire y emergencias de la ciudad de Misión. Proclamado el 25º día de septiembre de 2023.
¿Hablemos de un motion para aprobar?
Segundo.
Hay un motion y un segundo para aprobar la Proclamación de Día de Prevención de Fire como leído. Todos en favor decir aye.
Aye.
Todos en contra decir no. Motion lleva unanimidad. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Gracias. Vamos a hacer las otras dos proclamaciones y luego tomaremos fotos justo después de eso. A menos que alguien quiera decir algo especial en este punto.
Che.
Che. No.
Gracias.
Bien, gracias. Bien, el siguiente item es el Día de Seguridad de la Salud.
Hola.
Buenas tardes, señorías, counciliencia y gerente de la ciudad. Esta proclamación de comida es una primera de su tipo para el río Grande Valley. Y antes de ti tenemos a Yesenia Lugo, Desiree Santiago y Erin Ochoa. Todos son especialistas en la salud ambiental que hacen las inspecciones en nuestros restaurantes. Así que la proclamación lee así: Mientras que septiembre es Día Nacional de Educación de la Salud de la Comunidad, un mes dedicado a promover las prácticas seguras de la manipulación y preparación de la comida. Y mientras que la ciudad de Misión está firmemente comprometida con la seguridad de la comida y en la destacación de la papel crítica de la seguridad de la comida en la salud y bienestar de los residentes de Misión en Texas a través de la prevención de enfermedades causadas por la comida. Y mientras que el departamento de salud de la ciudad de Misión se centra en proteger la salud pública trabajando diligentemente para asegurar la seguridad de los restaurantes de comida de venta a través de inspecciones y educación. Y mientras que el departamento de salud de la ciudad de Misión proporciona inspecciones y educación de seguridad de la comida a más de 600 restaurantes de comida de venta en Misión sobre la manipulación, preparación y almacenamiento de comida, tanto en inspecciones educativas como consultas. Y mientras que el gobierno federal estimula que 48 millones de personas cada seis personas obtienen infecciones causadas por la comida cada año. De esos 128,000 son hospitalizados, 3,000 mueren de enfermedades causadas por la comida. Entonces, para aumentar la conciencia del valor de la educación de la seguridad de la comida el counciliencia de la ciudad de Misión proclama el 2023 como Día Nacional de Educación de la Salud de la Comunidad en la ciudad de Misión, Texas.
¿Vamos a aprobarlo?
Segundo.
Hay un motion y un segundo para aceptar la proclamación para el Día de Seguridad de la Salud. Todos en favor decir aye.
Aye.
Todos en contra decir no. Motion lleva unanimidad. Gracias.
Gracias.
¿Alguien más quería decir algo? ¿No? Bien.
Toma una foto.
Gracias. Bien, el siguiente item es la Proclamación de la Avertencia de Violencia Doméstica. Che Torres.
Buenas tardes, señora, counciliencia, gerente de la ciudad. La Proclamación de Violencia Doméstica states así: Mientras que el crimen de violencia doméstica viola la privacidad, la dignidad y la seguridad de los individuos debido al uso sistemático de control físico, emocional y sexual, psicológico y económico, la violencia doméstica extiende el abuso de niños y ancianos. Y mientras que los problemas de la violencia doméstica no son limitados a cualquier grupo o grupos de personas, sino a través de las barreras económicas, raciales y sociales y son apoyadas por las diferencias sociales. Y mientras que el impacto de la violencia doméstica es ampliamente variado directamente afectando a los individuos y a la sociedad en general aquí en esta comunidad, en los Estados Unidos y en el mundo. Mientras que el Departamento de Attorneys de la Corte de Hidalgo County y el Departamento de Policía de la ciudad de Misión en colaboración con otros grupos locales y agencias están trabajando para educar al público sobre los recursos disponibles para las víctimas de la violencia doméstica. Y mientras que los sobrevivientes de la violencia doméstica mismos han sido el frente de esfuerzos para traer paz y equidad a la casa, la violencia doméstica ya no puede ser tratada como una epidemia silenciosa. Y mientras que se insta a que todos los ciudadanos participen activamente en actividades y programas programados para trabajar hacia erradicar la violencia doméstica, mejorar la seguridad de las víctimas y encargarse de los perpetradores de abuso doméstico por sus acciones contra individuos, víctimas y la sociedad en general. Entonces, nosotros, el counciliencia de la ciudad de Misión, proclamamos el 25 de octubre de 2023 como Día de Avertencia de Violencia Doméstica e invitamos a la comunidad a unirse a nosotros el martes, el 3 de octubre de 2023, a las 6:00 p.m. en el centro de eventos de la ciudad de Misión ubicado en la 200 N. Sher Road. Este sería el evento de Avertencia de Violencia Doméstica. Proclamado el 25º día de septiembre de 2023.
¿Querráis hacer un motion para aprobar?
Segundo.
Hay un motion y un segundo para aprobar la Proclamación de Avertencia de Violencia Doméstica como leído. Todos en favor decir aye.
Aye.
Todos en contra decir no. Motion lleva unanimidad.
Y señora, también tenemos una víctima aquí. En el pasado fue un caso severo de violencia doméstica. Su nombre es Frida Suarez Seja y le gustaría decir algunas palabras. Tenemos un par de investigadores aquí que trabajaron en este caso. Era el investigador Tijerina y tenemos a Exinia, otro investigador que trabaja en este caso. Así que, señora Frida, ¿alguna palabra?
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Hoy estoy aquí para agradecerle al investigador Exinia y Tijerina por el trabajo y la comprensión que me brindaron a mí y a mi prima el día 3 de septiembre. Ese día, mi esposo llegó de sorpresa con la intención de terminar con mi vida a mis 22 años. Me tuvo sometida en el piso en medio de la calle apuntándome con la pistola en mi cabeza mientras yo rogaba por mi vida, pensando si terminaría aquí tirada siendo una estadística más. Sin embargo, él, en esos segundos de consciencia o inconsciencia, terminó con la suya en ese instante. Nunca podré saber cuáles habrán sido sus motivos por los cuales tomó las decisiones que tomó esa noche. Y aunque me duela mucho su pérdida, no puedo negar que lo que viví fue violencia doméstica. El día de hoy estoy aquí sobreviviendo la tragedia que viví y estoy consciente que su muerte me liberó. Gracias otra vez a los oficiales Exinia y Tijerina, al igual que Isela Marín, por la ayuda que nos han brindado. Pero también quiero agradecerle intensamente a mi prima Grecia que está aquí conmigo, que también estuvo conmigo ese día porque su valentía, su fuerza y el que ella me hubiera acompañado en cada momento desde que él llegó, cuando lo enfrentó al ver que me tenía correlada en su camioneta y hasta que salimos de la estación de policía. Gracias.
Gracias a ustedes.
Hola, buen día. Frida y yo fuimos víctimas de un atentado a nuestra vida de parte de su esposo. Y quiero decirle que es muy valiente y fuerte. Por haber sobrevivido todo el abuso doméstico que recibió y lastimosamente en la actualidad nosotras solo somos un pequeño porcentaje de mujeres sobrevivientes. Y quiero recordarle a las mujeres sobrevivientes de abuso doméstico que no están solas, que su fuerza y resiliencia son admirables. Busquen apoyo de amigos, familiares y profesionales de la salud mental. El camino hacia la recuperación puede ser difícil, pero hay esperanza y ayuda disponible. El bienestar de todas las mujeres es importante y todas y cada una de nosotras merecemos una vida llena de amor, respeto y seguridad, pero sobre todo libre de violencia y miedo. Y por último, quiero agradecerle a los investigadores Exinia y Tijerina por darnos seguridad, confianza y tranquilidad en un momento tan fuerte como el que vivimos. Y a Isela por su apoyo y su honoridad. Muchas gracias.
Gracias a ustedes.
Señor y counciliencia, solo quiero cerrar diciendo que no podemos olvidar sobre esos programas y aquellos individuos como Isela Marín. Y veo a algunos socios de víctimas de crímenes aquí a través del condado que son muy instrumentales en trabajar con nuestras víctimas de crímenes y ayudándolas a conseguir un lugar de hospedaje, como un hotel, y comidas y así sucesivamente. Así que estamos muy agradecidos por todos y gracias a todos nuestros sobrevivientes de crímenes. Gracias.
Gracias por estar aquí. ¿Querría que alguien más dijera algo?
Buenas tardes, señora, counciliencia. Solo queremos agradecerles por el apoyo, por pasar esta proclamación a cargo de nuestro attorney, el señor Terry Palacios, y también pedirles a que se unan a nosotros en nuestros esfuerzos para prevenir la violencia doméstica. Vamos a tener varias actividades planeadas para octubre y vamos a empezar el mes en vuestra ciudad con el evento de prevención del día azul que organizamos anualmente. Así que estamos muy agradecidos de que vuestra ciudad esté tomando esa iniciativa. Y solo quiero homenajear a las víctimas por estar aquí porque requiere mucho que alguien venga y diga la verdad y hable de la violencia doméstica. Y en particular, este evento que estamos organizando vamos a honrar y celebrar a los sobrevivientes. Siempre tendemos a enfocar nuestros esfuerzos en los peligros de la violencia doméstica, que son muy reales, pero fallamos en reconocer a todos los sobrevivientes que están ahí, que están vivos y que están prosperando en nuestra comunidad. Así que este evento es para ellos. Así que animamos a cualquier sobreviviente de violencia familiar a unirse a nosotros ese día. Gracias.
Gracias. Bien, vamos a ir por fotos. Si quieres, puedes quedarte allí. Ahora tendremos a Steven y su personal. We'll now do Fire Prevention Month. Next item on our agenda is a presentation from our Rio Grande Valley MPO.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
I'm Luis Diaz, Assistant Director, RGV MPO. I'm here to present the UTP, which is the Unified Transportation Program, which is the projects for the state for the next 10 years. So on August 16th of this year, our Tech dot Commission in Austin went ahead and approved 100 billion infrastructure improvements over the next years, and that's for the entire state. I'm going to go ahead and skip through some of the slides. I'm not going to go through all of them. I'm going to go through the most significant projects. And the first one here, this is the I-69C, I-69E connector, and that project got a total of $150 million. And that was from the Tech dot Commission. So this is Tech dot discretionary money. A total allocation for the entire state was 556,633,973, and this is all category two. The RGV, the RGV MPO completely has a total of 36 projects that utilize this funding category, which is all Tech dot discretionary. And this project is also the gateway to the new potential causeway going to the island. So there's a couple of alignments right now for this, and they're yet to select the final one, but it has been awarded the funding. But the causeway is a separate project, so that one's still awaiting potential funds, but this project could lead up to that corridor. So I'm going to go on now to category seven. So this is, these are funds that are actually discretionary by the, by the RGV MPO, our Transportation Policy Board. There were two projects that were awarded, the first one being Nolana Lou, and that one was awarded 25 million in category seven. And the other one being the South Pearl Oak Corridor in Cameron County, and that one was awarded 6,765 in category seven. And there's a total of 52 projects throughout the region that utilize this funding category as well. I'm going to go on to the Carbon Reduction Program. So this is out of our current transportation bill, and these are projects that either reduce emissions or carbon, or carbon footprint. The first one being the Far Bridge Commercial Vehicle Parking Site, and that one's going to have a total of 375 parking spots for trucks near the Far Bridge. The other project, and this is a total regional project, there's been signal improvements to either read time signals or even equipment, and that's 137 intersections throughout the region that are being funded through this program. And the third one being the South Moles Nature Trail, and that one is in Cameron County, and that's five miles of trails connecting to the existing network. And the last one here is bus passenger loading areas and facility improvements, and those are for the City of Brownsville. And these are the most significant projects coming out of the 10 years' funding. I could take any questions at this time.
Is there any questions? For Luis?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. You all are doing a great job. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is a report from our chamber.
Brandis and vacation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Perez. My name is Kenneth Rodriguez. I'm the Communications Director for the Mission Chamber of Commerce here on behalf of Ms. Brenda. So starting off, we have our annual member awards, which are two and a half weeks away on October 12th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Mission Event Center. We did announce our awardees this past week on our social media, and they are as followed. We have our Community Impact Awardee, which is Pause for Help, our Business of the Year, B2Z Engineering, and Business Leader of the Year, Ms. Deborah Cordova. So we are very excited for this event. On October 12th, we hope everybody here can make it, and we are still accepting sponsorship applications. For our programming, we do have a new website launched tomorrow. We are having a new website program, and this was a year-long effort to upgrade our website and make it more user-friendly to increase our website traffic to both our chamber page and to our Discover Mission website as well. On Wednesday, October 4th, we do have a ribbon cutting for Thrive Drip Spa. They are right next door to Shalatski's on Cherry. That will be happening at 6:00 PM. For more programming, we do have our Mission Scholarship Pageant Application now open. The pageant itself will be hosted on November 6th at the Mission Event Center, and it is open to teens ages 14 to 17, and women ages 18 to 27, excuse me, with the City of Mission address, and that deadline is going to be October 30th. For our educational development activities, we have two SBDC seminars on Wednesday, September 27th. We have one via Zoom at 10:00 AM, Social Media Tips for Small Businesses, and then one at 2:00 PM, Our Smart Start in Person at UTRGV in Edinburgh. We are closing out our fiscal year this week, so we do have a Board of Directors Board Meeting and Retreat this Friday, and we welcome two new board members to the Mission Chamber of Commerce. We have Mr. Omar Guevara of the Radisson Hotel, and Mr. Tim Brown of the Brown Family Funeral Home. We also thank Mr. Sean Downey of Five by Five Brewery, and Sandra Vetro of RV Contractors for their six years of service to our board. Closing out, our Discover Mission team. Our team participated in the BOSS Showcase at Benson State Park this past Saturday, celebrating 100 years of Texas State Parks. Our team advertised the City of Mission to visitors and to encourage them to explore the different assets our city has to offer. And that is our report.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Okay, the next item are the departmental reports. Are the, those were in our packets. Are there any questions or comments?
More to approve the reports as presented, Mayor?
Second. There's a motion and a second to accept the reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is citizens' participation.
We have Chief Cesar Torres.
Chief Torres.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Chief Torres, again. We're here. I wanted to formally introduce our Assistant Chief of Police, Ray Perez. I know that last time not, there was some council that was not there, so I want to make sure that everyone has, has had an opportunity to meet. The selection, to select an Assistant Chief was very difficult to say, because we have 13 solid applicants, pinnacle experience that went before the board. I thought it was in the best interest of the agency and the city moving forward to select the officers or supervisors who had been with the agency for 25 years and more, and also have an Assistant Chief there, and also human resources. I was not part of the selection process, but I wanted to make sure that we did it as a team to make sure that we got the best qualified. And Ray Perez, who is a, was a sergeant for, had been with the agency for 30 years. It was a no-brainer that he's very prepared for the position. I've monitored him in the past year and a half that I've been here, and he's one of those leaders, the leads from the front, from the center, from the rear. So here's Ray, Chief Perez, and he would like to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, City Council members. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. On behalf of my family and myself, I want to thank you for allowing me to be the next Assistant Chief. With the guidance and leadership of Chief Torres, I am confident that we can bring good, positive things to our department. I also want to thank you for always supporting our police department, our staff, and all of our officers. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Okay. And who do we have behind us?
So behind us, we, we have our officers. Obviously, we pinned 12 new officers, and so when we went out before, obviously, it's very difficult to attract officers nowadays across the nation. And for that reason, the, the federal government changed the law in civil service cities, who, once you're 45 years of age, you can't work for a police department that is civil service. So the law was changed, effective this coming October 1st, and so because of that, we'll be able to hire officers that have more age, up in age. But here, these 12 officers were very, very motivated individuals that, you know, we want to get the best of the best, and obviously, these 12 were the best of the best. So I just wanted to formally introduce them also as well. Here they are, so they're excited, right?
Do you want to come and introduce yourselves?
Anybody come on, come up and introduce one at a time?
All of you.
Hello, how you doing? My name Francisco De Lao. I'm excited to work for the City of Mission and excited to serve the community. So thankful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Scott Garcia. I just want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, guys. My name's Brandon Rodriguez, and I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity for my, thank you guys.
Oh, same thing. Just want to thank you guys for the opportunity and be able to grow and put in that career here.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Fernando Rojas. I just got hired recently, just a couple of last months. I look forward to working for the great City of Mission and the leadership of Chief Torres. It's going to be a great journey, Mr. [unintelligible].
Hello, it's Ricardo Rodriguez. Just want to say thank you, and I'm grateful for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Diego Garcia. Just want to say that I'm very grateful to work for the City of Mission and just happy to be here and, and serve the community.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Bartín Reynoso. I have about four and a half years of experience, and I'm planning to, to use my experience to, to do my best to serve the citizens of the City of Mission. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mungia. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to being here.
Hello, my name is Victor Solís, and I want to say thank you for the opportunity.
Good afternoon. My name's Erica Duran, and I'm excited to be here, and I'm grateful for the opportunity as well. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Can we get a picture with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to the public hearings, plan and zoning recommendations. Item number nine, Ms. Susie.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and City Manager. Item number nine is a rezoning for Lot 21, Block 3, Oakwood Estates subdivision. This is from R1, Single Family Residential to C3 General Business. The applicant is Lanelli and Sergio Zerda. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption, an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located 125 feet east of River Oak Avenue along the north side of West Griffin Parkway. Surrounding zones include residential to the north and west, and general commercial to the east and south. The existing land uses include a single-family residential on the north side, a daycare on the south side. On the east side, there's a convenience store, and on the, the west side is the property and its vacant. The future land use map shows this area as general commercial. The proposal does comply with city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. P&amp;Z and staff recommend it approve. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this rezoning request? Is there anyone online? No? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I saw more, Mayor.
Second. There's a motion and a second to close a public hearing on item number nine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any discussion or motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request from R1 to C3 at Lot 21, Block 3, Oakwood Estates subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number 5377. Next item?
Item number 10 is a conditional use permit to build a pool house on property zone R1, Single Family Residential. This is at 2800 Summer Breeze. This would be Lot 16, Cherry Oaks subdivision. The applicant is Mark [unintelligible]. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption, an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 710 feet west of North Sherwood Road along the south side of Summer Breeze. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the construction of the pool house. The pool house will consist of a game room, indoor lounge, bath, storage, covered patio totaling 1,651 square feet. Pool houses are allowed under R1 as long as they comply with the following. Apply for a conditional use permit. They need to be a minimum of 12,000 square feet. They cannot be made available for, or used for lease rent. They are meeting all the setbacks. Planning and staff approve the conditional use permit, subject to no separate utility and electrical connections, transferability to other future owners imposing same conditions imposed to this applicant, and not to be used for rental purposes. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or opposed to the conditional use permit for a pool house at 2800 Summer Breeze? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
May I move to approve based on the recommendation of the step and subject to the requirements?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that is ordinance number fifty-three seventy-eight. Next item?
Item number eleven is a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for La Cruda. This is located at seventeen oh two East Griffin Parkway, Suite A. This is the east fifty-one feet of Lot 8B, Stewart Village Phase One subdivision. The property is currently zone C3 general business, and the applicant is Silvia S. Luque. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption, an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the southeast corner of Stewart and FM 495 at the Stewart Village Commercial Plaza. The applicant has leased a suite within the plaza for a ceviche snack bar. Access to the site is off of Griffin Parkway. The applicant would like to continue to offer alcoholic beverages in her menu. The last CUP approved for this location was on August twenty-three of 2021 for a period of two years. The applicant would like to renew her conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol. Days and hours of operation proposed are Tuesday to Sunday from eleven a.m. to eight p.m. They currently have two employees. Parking, the parking is held in common for the entire commercial plaza. Staff and PNZ recommended approval, subject to a tour reevaluation, at which time the applicant will have to renew the CUP and TABC license, and they must comply with all city requirements, including health and fire. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit renewal at seventeen oh two East Griffin Parkway? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? No?
May I move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number eleven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Is, are there any discussions, questions, or a motion?
I'm going to approve based on the recommendation of the step and subject to the requirements.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that is ordinance number fifty-three seventy-eight. Next item?
Item number eleven is a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for La Cruda. This is located at seventeen oh two East Griffin Parkway, Suite A. This is the east fifty-one feet of Lot 8B, Stewart Village Phase One subdivision. The property is currently zone C3 general business, and the applicant is Silvia S. Luque. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption, an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the southeast corner of Stewart and FM 495 at the Stewart Village Commercial Plaza. The applicant has leased a suite within the plaza for a ceviche snack bar. Access to the site is off of Griffin Parkway. The applicant would like to continue to offer alcoholic beverages in her menu. The last CUP approved for this location was on August twenty-three of 2021 for a period of two years. The applicant would like to renew her conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol. Days and hours of operation proposed are Tuesday to Sunday from eleven a.m. to eight p.m. They currently have two employees. Parking, the parking is held in common for the entire commercial plaza. Staff and PNZ recommended approval, subject to a tour reevaluation, at which time the applicant will have to renew the CUP and TABC license, and they must comply with all city requirements, including health and fire. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit renewal at seventeen oh two East Griffin Parkway? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? No?
May I move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number eleven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any questions, discussion, or a motion?
Move for approval, Mayor?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit renewal as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and that's ordinance number fifty-three seventy-nine. Next item?
Item number twelve is a conditional use permit renewal to keep a food, a mobile food truck at Fiesta Hot Dogs in a C2 zone. This is at 208 North Inspiration Road, being Lot 1, Madrigal subdivision. The applicant is Fiesta Hot Dogs and Carol Federico Garcia and Lucero Vázquez. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption, an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located one hundred and thirty feet north of West Second Street along the east side of Inspiration Road within the Fiesta Grocery Site. The applicant has a seventeen-by-eight mobile food truck on the west side of the grocery store for the sale of hot dogs, hamburgers, tortas, tacos, and fries. The applicant is also the person operating the grocery store. Access to the site is from an existing driveway along Inspiration Road. The existing restroom facilities located within the grocery store will be available for the mobile food truck customers. Hours of operation are Monday to Thursday from six p.m. to twelve a.m., Fridays, Friday through Sunday from six p.m. to one p.m. They currently propose four employees. There's, for parking, there's a total of nine parking spaces available for the store, and that would be shared with a mobile food truck. PNZ and staff recommended approval, subject to a tour reevaluation to assess the operation, compliance with all city requirements, including health and fire. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit renewal? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Come on down. Please state your name and address for the record.
Si, mi nombre es Federico Garcia. Soy el dueño del negocio. Nada más para pedir la oportunidad de seguir trabajando y muy gratas deles por darnos el permiso primera vez y no hemos tenido ningún problema y estamos nada más para trabajar.
Okay. Gracias. All right. Anyone else in favor or in opposition? Anyone online? No? No?
May I move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number twelve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that's ordinance number fifty-three eighty. And that is it for our public hearings. Well, next item is the consent agenda, and that's items number thirteen through twenty-two. Is there anything that needs to be pulled or discussed separately?
Mayor, I would like to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number twenty-two, which is the first bid for the maintenance building of the golf course.
Okay.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented, except for item number twenty-two. And that would be item number sixteen with resolution number eighteen fifty-two, item number seventeen with resolution number eighteen fifty-three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. So the next item is number twenty-two. Item number twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number twenty-two, authorization to solicit bids for the Cherry Golf Course Maintenance Building.
Mr. Perez, do you want to come up?
So you all know we hired Mr. Vela, EGV Architects, for the design of the maintenance building, where we're going to be storing our equipment for the golf course. Mr. Jesse Myers is also being part of these meetings, be able to value engineer some of these things that we're going to do in-house.
You know exactly what it is that we were going to do, because I really feel like the clubhouse or the golf course needs a lot of help right now. So I don't know, we had like a master plan, or what is it that we're going to be doing? And, I mean, how much do we have on the budget for this? We know?
So the engineering estimate that we received at the very beginning was close to a million dollars. That's when Mr. Jesse Myers and myself got with the architect to value engineer some of these things that we can do in-house. So we lowered it to four hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand so far, and that's why we're going to put up for bids to make sure we get a good competitive pricing and see if we got the budget to cover for the extra expense. But Mr. Jesse Myers and his team is getting ready to do some of the work in-house. For example, we're planning to do the rough ends and also the water lines, the sewer lanes, we're planning to do it in-house, and also the electrical work is planned to be in-house.
JP, and where exactly is this going to be? Is it an existing building already that you're going to cover up, or it's?
No, it will be a totally brand-new building. It will be right next to the driving range. Right now, the equipment is being parked at the storage shack, so as the direction of Mr. Randy Perez gave us, he wants to beautify the area and use a storage shack as a family-oriented environment, so we want to open up the storage shack. Also, that's another thing that Mr. Myers is going to do. He's going to, we're going to do it in-house. We're going to beautify the storage shack. We're going to add picnic tables. We're going to add ceiling fans, and we're going to beautify it, pull that equipment out of there and put it in this new storage facility.
Now, this storage facility, it's going to be for all equipment that you all utilize day-to-day, and then also like the golf carts and all that there too? Or is there another area for that?
No, it's mainly for chemicals and equipment.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we do have enough storage for the golf carts.
So where is all that right now currently?
At the storage shack.
Okay, so we outgrew it already.
Yeah, so we, so if you all recall, this equipment was stored at the building that we demolished for the Lions Park renovation is right now, and so we relocated that to the storage shack. And to add to Mr. Terrazas and Mr. Myers, Mr. Plata, so we're looking at improving not only the, you know, cosmetically at the golf course. We replaced the, this past year, we replaced the carpet inside that was much needed to get replaced. We're currently going to be painting the outside of the building itself. Mr. Terrazas mentioned about, so we want to improve the driving range so we can attract and bring back families to utilize the driving range, so that we want to remodel what the current storage shack is. It's a covered pavilion that will allow us to have, you know, basically sell our snacks and restaurant outside, as well as adding, you know, additional lighting and picnic areas along the driving range, so we can promote that driving range, so it could be more utilized. We, we're in the process of that. I know staff has been working diligently on doing it in-house, and so we're making the improvements. I know we're also trimming all the trees around the golf course as well for better visibility for the golfers, and of course, aesthetics as well. So we're currently working on that facility.
Randy, do we have like a software that can tell us, you know, like show pictures of how it's that things are going to look like? Do we have anything like that in-house?
A rendering of how it's going to look, or we can?
I mean, for, you know, I mean, we are working and improving and remodeling some of our buildings, and especially, I mean, when it's done in-house, I mean, pictures say a thousand words, you know, and I think it'd be...
I think we, Mr. Plata, we talked that about, any time that we have some type of city project for us to kind of advertise with some sort of four-by-eight or some type of advertisement to let the community know what's going on there, because we do get the phone calls asking us, hey, what's going on over here?
Yes, definitely, we can do that. We can do a four-by-eight like you mentioned, like we've done in the past, also like we've done on the drainage projects, that we advertise our rendering and what it's expected to be. And yes, definitely, we can do that and set it up at the site.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm going to approve.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to authorize the solicitation of bids for the Cherry Golf Course Maintenance Building. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Chief. Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Next item is authorization to award bid from Frontera Materials for the purchase of sand backfill material for the Public Works Department Streets Division. The City of Mission accepted an open four-bid responses for the purchase of sand backfill material. Staff and City Manager recommend awarding bid to Frontera Materials, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications with a bid of five dollars per ton. Orders will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the one-year base term. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize, to award bids to Frontera Materials for sand backfill. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item?
Thank you. Next item is authorization to award bid to Frontera Materials for the purchase of hot and cold mix asphalt for the Public Works Department Streets Division. We have accepted an open four-bid responses. Staff recommend awarding bid to Frontera Materials, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications, recommendations based on estimated quantities, and orders that will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the six-month base term. The contract term is for six months with the option to renew for two additional six months renewals. Staff and City Manager...
I have a quick question, Mayor, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
So how was it that on the hot and cold mix asphalt, was there a price for that one?
There was a price. I can give that information for you. I think we just felt to put it in the agenda item.
So, so I have it here, able, so, and I'm referring to, it is a unit price, so it, we did receive, it's a per-unit price, so we, one of them was a hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy cents per ton, the other one was a hundred and nine dollars per ton, a hundred and nineteen per ton, and the lowest responsible bidder, ninety-seven, ninety-two per ton. That's for the cold mix and then the hot mix as well. They had bids seventy-nine, ninety, which is the lowest. The other ones were eighty-three and ninety. So it's a per-unit cost.
And so Frontera had the ninety-seven?
Correct.
Per ton, and that's...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Where is Frontera from?
Thank you. They are from...
Elsa.
Elsa, Texas.
Is there any more discussion, questions, for staff? Okay. There is a motion and a second to approve the item number twenty-five. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item number twenty-three, authorization to purchase an additional web-based subscription from ESO, the sole source vendor, to incorporate training, inspection, and asset management modules to exist in ESO platform. The Mission Fire Department is seeking to purchase an additional web-based subscription. As mentioned, the department currently has an EMS module, and we would like to add the rest of these at a cost of twenty-six thousand forty-eight dollars. Again, we're using ARPA funds and will be utilized for this purchase.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize a purchase of additional web-based subscription from ESO. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number twenty-three, authorization to purchase an additional web-based subscription from ESO, the sole source vendor, to incorporate training, inspection, and asset management modules to exist in ESO platform. The Mission Fire Department is seeking to purchase an additional web-based subscription. As mentioned, the department currently has an EMS module, and we would like to add the rest of these at a cost of twenty-six thousand forty-eight dollars. Again, we're using ARPA funds and will be utilized for this purchase.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize a purchase of additional web-based subscription from ESO. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Chief. Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Next item is authorization to award bid from Frontera Materials for the purchase of sand backfill material for the Public Works Department Streets Division. The City of Mission accepted an open four-bid responses for the purchase of sand backfill material. Staff and City Manager recommend awarding bid to Frontera Materials, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications with a bid of five dollars per ton. Orders will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the one-year base term. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize, to award bids to Frontera Materials for sand backfill. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item?
Thank you. Next item is authorization to award bid to Frontera Materials for the purchase of hot and cold mix asphalt for the Public Works Department Streets Division. We have accepted an open four-bid responses. Staff recommend awarding bid to Frontera Materials, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. Recommendation is based on estimated quantities and orders that will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the six-month base term. The contract term is for six months with the option to renew for two additional six months renewals. Staff and City Manager.
Second.
I have a question, Mayor, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
So how was it that on the hot and cold mix asphalt, was there a price for that one?
There was a price. I can give that information for you. I think we just felt to put it in the agenda item.
So I have it here able, so I'm referring to. It is a unit price, so it, we did receive. It's a per-unit price, so we, one of them was $136.70 per ton. The other one was $109 per ton, $119 per ton, and the lowest responsible bidder, $97.92 per ton. That's for the cold mix and then the hot mix as well. They had bids $79.90, which is the lowest. The other ones were $83 and $90. So it's a per-unit.
Oh, I see. And so Frontera had the $97.
Correct.
Per ton, and that's, okay. Thank you.
Where is Frontera from?
Thank you. They are from Tulsa.
Tulsa, Tulsa, Texas.
Is there any more discussion, questions, for staff? Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve the item number 25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero.
Thank you.
Next item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item number 26 is seeking approval of resolution. Is that the resolution number? 1854. Supporting the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley's submission of the region's recompete plan and strategy development grant. The U.S. Economic Development Administration released a notice of funding opportunity for Phase One of the distressed area recompete pilot program. Phase One will comprise of a grant opportunity for a strategy development grant as well as the opportunity to submit a region's recompete plan. All four counties of the Rio Grande Valley have been deemed fully eligible as local labor markets and have a prime-age employment gap of at least 5% of a median annual household income of no more than $75,000. The region has established the RGV recompete coalition, including these initial stakeholders as well as equitably inviting others to join per the scope of the project. UTRGV has been selected to serve as a principal applicant and lead member organization for application and implementation, serving as the central coordinator, maintaining communication and ensuring that funding and other assistance provided by the EDA are effectively coordinated within the RGV region. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1854, supporting the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley's submission of the region's recompete plan and strategy development grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. I just want to add that this is a great opportunity for our region and the reason for the submission as a region is so that each city or entity does not actually, we don't compete against each other. So we're all doing this together as a region and hopefully our application will be viewed more positively. And we'll, it's a process. You probably don't expect any answers until March of next year. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have a couple more items?
Yes.
Item number 27 is seeking discussion, consideration, and adoption of Resolution 1855 to designate authorized signatories for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program for GLO State Contract Number 23-152-003-E070. And this is seeking authorization for Mayor and City Manager to execute contracted documents between the Texas General Land Office and the city. Also, the Mayor, City Manager, Finance Director, and Director of Grants, myself, to execute the State of Texas Purchasing Voucher and request for payment documentation required for requesting funds approved by CDBG Recovery Program. And also, the Mayor, City Engineer, to execute environmental review and related documents as responsible entities for the Community Development Block Grant Recovery Program. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 1855. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Next item.
Item number 28 is seeking discussion, consideration, and adoption of Resolution 1856 regarding civil rights policies, which would include the following: Citizen Participation Plan and Grievance Procedures, Section 3 Policy, Excessive Force Policy, Limited English Proficiency Standards Plan, Section 504 Policy and Grievance Procedures, Code of Conduct Policy and Fair Housing Policy. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Want to approve?
Second.
Mayor?
I have a question.
Okay.
What is this in reference to?
This is in reference to a grant that we received with the Texas General Land Office for Drainage Improvement. Recently, we received 997,236.75 for the La Cuchilla Project. It's administered by the Texas General Land Office, but it's federal funding through HUD. So they do have strict requirements. And part of the requirement is to adopt these policies for the grant itself. These wouldn't alter any of the city policies. This is pertaining strictly to the grant.
That's great.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 1856. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Maintenance for 23, 2024 from Tyler Technologies, a sole-source vendor at a cost of $36,091.53. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Want to approve, Mayor?
Second. There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of Brasso Software Maintenance from a sole-source vendor, Tyler Technologies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Thank you.
Item 30, Authorization to Purchase Renewal of Law Enforcement
New World Enterprise Software Maintenance for 2023, 2024 from Tyler Technologies, a sole-source vendor at a cost of $126,732.95. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase renewal of New World Enterprise Public Safety Software. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Next item.
Item 31, Authorization to Purchase Renewal of In-Code ERP Software Maintenance for 2023, 2024 from Tyler Technologies, a sole-source vendor at a cost of $136,939. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of renewal of In-Code ERP Software Maintenance from a sole-source vendor, Tyler Technologies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. Mr. Garcia.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. This is item number 32. It's the authorization to enter into a contract with Noble Texas Builders LLC for roof repairs to the seed building via the buyboard contract. As you recall, this, the building was damaged back in April during the storms, and we've been able to finally get our hands on a contractor to do this. And this is something that has already cleared the Mission Economic Development Corporation Board, Mayor's unit.
There's no insurance?
Yes, there's insurance. So we're, we got initial estimate of $50,000 from our insurance, which is the TML insurance. And then we were able to increase that to 75 after it was, we looked at. And so the 75 would be applied to this 180. So we would pay the difference for that. There is some structural damage in there that we had to use engineers and architects to redesign. And so that's what's really the cost here.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to enter into a contract with Noble Texas Builders for roof repairs at the seed building. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Next item, financial statements, Ms. Vela.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number 33 is the approval of the July 2023 financial statements. Total revenues for the month were $6,927,916, and total expenditures were $12,952,120, leaving an estimated fund balance of $18,289,91. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the July 2023 financial statements as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Next item.
Item number 34 is the acceptance of the July 2023 tax collection report. The 2022 total adjusted tax levy for taxes was $29,020,72.89, and the amount of the collections as of July 31, 2023 is $28,028,618.37, which represents 96.58% of the total 2022 tax levy. The total adjusted tax levy for delinquent taxes was $2,337,489.50, and the amount of collections as of July 31, 2023 is $531,290.28, which represents 22.73% of the total tax levies from previous years. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the July 2023 tax collection report as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Item number 35 is the approval of the amended Finance Department fiscal policies for capital assets outlining procedures for inventory. This policy was approved by Council on September 26, 2022, to formally outline the procedures for the Finance Department for tracking and inventory control of all capital assets that meet the city's threshold. This policy is being amended to increase the threshold from 1,000 to 5,000 as approved in purchasing policy on September 11, 2023. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the amended Finance Department Fiscal Policy Assets outlining procedure for inventory. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Item number 36 is the acceptance of the quarterly report on investments ending June 30, 2023, and interest earned for nine months ending June 20, 30, 2023. The total increases to investment balances for the period was $404,765.24, and total decreases were $498,000, leaving a balance of $20,466,784.13 in outstanding investments for the quarter ending June 30, 2023. The total interest earned on all funds year-to-date was $424,353.73. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Are there any questions? Or motion?
I do want to move to approve, but I know that I requested some information a couple of weeks ago. Would like to see if I can obtain that. And let's make sure that all of the budget amendments and all of that, I mean, as much as they can be done prior to closing the year. That way, we have less. I mean, for some reason, I really would like to see if our budget, our annual report, our audit is done, I mean, soon. I mean, it should be able to be done within three months to four months after we close the year. So I do, we will be paying attention to that because it needs to be done, Mr. Randy.
Yes, we'll work on expediting that audit this year, sir.
I have made a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the quarterly report of investments for the quarter ending June 30, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. Next item.
Item number 37 is the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have general fund, utility fund, designated purpose fund, veterans fund, veteran cemetery fund, and MDC fund. In the general fund, we have reclassifications of $845,277 to reclassify funds at year-end to cover line item shortages within the general fund as recommended by the city audit firm. Also, in the general fund, we have $2,294,444 in revenues and expenditures to allocate funding from lease financing for the purchase of fire trucks and a park's backhoe. And also, in general fund, we have $75,000 in revenues and expenditures to allocate funding from the Hidalgo County for the e-library project. Funds were used to purchase electronic library material. In the utility fund, we have $761,900 in reclassifications to cover line item shortages within utility fund as recommended by city audit firm. In Designated Purpose Fund, we have various grants, $57,000 in revenues and $50,000 in expenditures. $5,000 is for revenues and expenditures from Superior Health for fire prevention smoke-along program, $2,000 in revenues and expenditures from Electronic Transmission Texas LLC for rehab equipment used in daily operations for fire, $30,000 in the Petco Love Program from Petco for animal welfare services, and $20,000 from Mars Pet Care for health to assist residents to cover pet deposit rental leases. In the Veteran Cemetery Fund, we have reclassification and expenditures at year-end to cover the carryover of an irrigation project completed in the current fiscal year. And in the MDC fund, we have $70,000 in revenues and $188,22 in expenditures to allocate funding for the roof damage repairs caused during the severe weather from April 29, 2023. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Are there any questions?
The $70,000 from the MDC fund, is that what he was talking about on the insurance?
Yes. So originally, when the MDC took this budget amendment, it was an estimate because we didn't have the final approval from TML.
So that money has been received?
$48,000 of it has.
Out of the 70?
Yes.
So how can you transfer, how can you do us? I mean, you have, we have not received the whole 70?
We should, because it's going to be used in this fiscal year. If the, you know, they're going to start the project this week. If it gets completed, we'll apply whatever gets completed to this fiscal year. If any of it gets completed in next fiscal year, we'll have to bring a budget amendment to carry over what didn't get completed.
Okay. Okay. So you are thinking, Carol Polo, that transfers right prior to another year? So this is why I always say that it should not be too many after we close the year, right? Okay. Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to approve the budget of amendments as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously five-zero.
Item 38 is the approval of the Publicity and Tourism Agreement with the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. This is for fiscal year 2324. These are funds that are received from the Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax under VAT's Tax Code Section 351.101 to use hotel occupancy tax funds for attracting and promoting tourism and the convention and hotel industry. Attached is a copy of the 2324 agreement to be effective October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2024 in the amount of $310,000. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
So we're going to give $310 to the chamber?
Yes.
It's the same agreement from last year, and this is coming from the Hotel Motel tax.
What do you mean about estimated costs is $180,824.5?
It's on the roof damage. That's what it says on.
That's the previous.
It's, it's part of the bullet points.
Oh, it is. That should be part of the.
It's not, it's not part of this item. It was a.
It's a typo.
Okay.
And so we're going to be, Ms., hi Angie, how are you?
Good.
You've done a lot today. So we're going to, every year, we give them monies.
Yes.
From the Hotel Motel. Has it ever been to this extent? Like, what's a regular amount?
It was 310. It was actually more prior to us having the event center. But we also use it now to partially fund the event center, so it did decrease.
And do they give you a list of the things that they'll spend the money on?
They give us their financials at the end of the year, and we receive their $990 that they filed with the IRS. So they have given us their September 2022 financials. They're currently working on closing their end of year, so we'll get their 2023 once that gets completed.
They also submit their budget as well at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
So there's the 180 set typo?
Yes, correct, sorry.
How many people reviews the agenda? How many people reviews the agenda?
When this one, sir, this is, the bullet point agenda is for our internal purposes. It's not what was published. This, this information is for our information.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Do you, do you, even though it is, do your assistant city managers review the agendas? Just a question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Angie, and is this your daughter in the audience?
No.
Oh, I thought it was. She's a lot younger.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the Publicity and Tourism Agreement[1681.35] There's a motion and a second to approve the publicity and tourism agreement with the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. As presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item?
Yes, Mayor and Council, good evening. If approved, this will be ordinance number fifty-three-eighty-one. This is for sanitation capital rates. In order to finance the sanitation capital equipment operations, it's necessary to adjust the rates. With the changes in consumer price index inflation, it's become necessary to make these adjustments in order to maintain the vital operations and providing this valuable service to our citizens of Mission. The new garbage rates for residential, multifamily, government, industrial, and commercial rates will be two dollars per account, and this will go in effect in October one of twenty-twenty-three. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number fifty-three-eighty-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Approval of Resolution, it would be eighteen fifty-seven, establishing a charter review committee, appointing members, assigning duties, and providing for public meetings. The charter, charter review committee is going to be charged with considering and making recommendations to the council, including but not limited to technical and other updated amendments that might be suggested by the mayor and the council and committee members and/or city staff. The mayor and council shall each select one responsible and independent member as their appointment to serve on the committee, and this is the opportunity for the council to, to appoint their, their members to the charter review committee.
Okay. Ms. Jessica, do you have your appointees?
Yes. And then the second one's the next one, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, Mayor, for the charter committee, I'd like to appoint Leti Garcia.
Okay. Mr. Quata?
Paulio Cerda.
And I'm appointing Kevin Sanchez.
Hector Ramidis, Mayor. And just for purposes of full disclosure, he is my brother-in-law. I did clear with legal, with regards to any form of nepotism or anything like that for this committee, and there is none, my understanding, so.
That would be correct.
Joe Baragas.
Joe Baragas?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just for the charter.
This is for the charter.
This is the charter review committee. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so you have your appointees, Ms. Anna? So we're ready to approve the-
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'm going for approval.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution number eighteen fifty-seven, establishing a charter review committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Just as a side note, the charter has not been a, has not been amended since nineteen-eighty-seven, so it's been a few years. So we're going to try to get through this and get it up to date and cleaned up. The purpose for this commit, for these changes are, they will need to be in our next general election?
Our May fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
Election that the public, our residents need to vote on, on, on this item. Okay. So the next item, Ms. Anna?
The next item, item forty-one, is approval of Resolution eighteen fifty-eight, establishing an ordinance review committee. This is also appointing members and assigning duties. This particular committee also, each council member will appoint five, five members. In this committee, we need an appointment for a planning and zoning, a current planning and zoning member, and also an alternate to the mayor position, because the mayor will be serving as a voting member on this particular ordinance committee. So this will be a committee of seven. So I just need all of the, the members for this particular ordinance committee, review committee.
Okay. I would like to appoint Everato Virial.
Okay.
Dahlia Robison, answer.
Okay. My appointment is Romeo Sanchez.
Eric Flores, no relation.
Carson.
Esther Salinas.
The P and Z member?
P and Z member? I would appoint the chairman.
Diana Isaguirre is the current chairman?
Yes. Or designee, in case she can come.
And then an alternate council member for the mayor position.
Who would like to volunteer for that?
Albién.
Albién? Did you want to volunteer?
Sure.
You need an attorney there.
Okay. All righty. There you go.
Okay.
Now I need a motion to-
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution eighteen fifty-eight, which is establishing the ordinance review committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
I'll get with the individual council members, so they can give me the contact information for some of these individuals that I don't have, and that way I can send out the appointment letters. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business? We don't have anything under unfinished business?
No.
So we'll go to city manager's comments?
A couple comments. This Saturday, September thirtieth, from eight to twelve, we are having our Fall Community Roundup to collect bulky items and tire collections. It'll be on fourteen-hundred South Conway. We're encouraging, we're promoting this event, so that citizens have the opportunity to come and submit the bulky items and tire collections that they have in their homes.
Is that from eight to twelve?
Yes, ma'am. Eight to twelve.
Just from eight to twelve, okay.
Yes. And then also, we will advise them that, you know, they can come during the week if they need to dispose of their items as well at our current sanitation location. Also, as the chief mentioned earlier, we will have that fire prevention, cooking safety, October the second, Leo Peña Placita Park, from six to nine P.M. Also, October the third, the Fallen Day Domestic Violence Awareness Event, as the police chief mentioned, at the Mission Event Center, that'll be at six P.M. And then also, just to remind everyone, we will have the Duchess Competition, October the seventh, at Mission Event Center. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I have no comment. Everybody have a blessed week.
No comments.
I, I don't have any comments today.
No comments, Mayor.
I just have the-
Yes.
I was going to talk about the COVID vaccine. On September eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, the FDA approved the updated vaccine for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, manufactured by Moderna and Pfizer. The new vaccines are expected to provide good protection against COVID-nineteen from the currently circulating variants. This would, will be just given once a year instead of the every two, twice a year term that we're doing right now. It is not covered completely through the government, so it would have to be covered by insurance or on a cash basis.
Thank you for that update. It's very important. We need to stay healthy, so I encourage everyone to go get your vaccines as soon as they're available. And I guess that's it? Is there a motion?
More to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for being here.